For one public hearing for each of them individually or collectively.
That sounds great. I'll be glad to read them. And then also, just for the record, I do think Madam Chairwoman said it, but I'm not sure if everyone heard that we did a prayer and pledge in the previous meeting, and the body accepted those in this meeting. So just for the record. The first item for a potential agenda addition is a special resolution of remembrance for Ramona Baylor, and that's from Commissioner Victor Thomas. The second item is a potential agenda addition. And what this is, is a slight change to the title of ordinance 6560. It read, "An ordinance to amend Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo relating to traffic schedules to establish a speed bump placement and to otherwise provide with respect thereto," and is being changed. The word "speed bump" is being removed, and it is going to be changed to "placement of traffic calming devices to include speed bumps and humps and otherwise provide with respect thereto." 4.3 is a potential agenda addition. That would be a special resolution of remembrance for Thelma Jones, from Commissioner Stephon Jones. And then 4.4 is a potential agenda addition regarding a special resolution for Eden Gardens Class of 1970 reunion from Commissioner Cofflin.
All right. At this time, I would like to open for public comments to speak in favor or against adding the potential agenda addition items that were just read. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against any of these items being added to the agenda? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you very much. So those items, 4.1, 4.3, and 4.4 will find themselves added at the end of your new business section, and 4.2 will... Oh, I'm sorry, after you vote.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner John Paul Young and second by the chair. You would please vote.
Commissioners Thomas and Burella is absent. And that motion carries with 10 in support, two absent. And so at this point, those items will be added. 4.1 becomes 11.10. 4.2 amends 11.3. And then 4.3 becomes 11.11, and 4.4 becomes 11.12.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next item?
Citizens' comments, please.
Okay. That brings us now to visitors, where we do not have scheduled... Oh, I'm sorry. That brings us to citizens' comments, where we do have quite a few requests. Citizens who wish to address the commission on any issue other than zoning or ask to fill out a comment card located in the chamber foyer and return it to the president or the clerk of the commission. Individual comments are limited to three minutes. And the comment card box is here to my left if somebody has not submitted yet. And there have been a number of requests submitted to the president.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair yields to Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you all for coming today. I do want to remind everyone of our bylaws. Visitors who desire to address the commission will be notified by the president or the commission clerk at the beginning of the meeting to fill out a card to be presented to the president prior to recognition. Discussion is limited to three minutes per person. The number of people speaking on a single subject will be limited to five. Questions may be asked by commissioners when the subject appears on the agenda. If the subject that is being discussed does not appear on the agenda for that day, the commission will place it on the following workstation agenda, and if requested by the visitors. Once again, there will be a total of 15 minutes for both sides. That's three visitors per side, three minutes each. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. The first card I have is Michael Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Michael Williams, 201 Carver Place, Shreveport, Louisiana. I rise to say that I'm not totally opposed against the pickleball initiative. It's a new evolution, global evolution, and the new culture is pickleball. And the only pickleball that I know that poor black and children that live in urban and rural America is the pickle that you eat. And that's a... I think we're getting a sour deal, and people on the other side is getting a good deal. So I'm not totally opposed, and I think I want to talk intellectually and philosophical why. And while recreation and leisure projects may have their place, proposed pickleball is not the right priority for Shreveport and Caddo Parish at this time. Reality is clear. Our community continues to struggle with high poverty rates, limited employment opportunity, and a lack of residual income. Families are working hard just to make ends meet, and many do not have the stability or resources to benefit from such a project. Investing in pickleball facility does not address the urgent need of our residents, jobs, workforce development, affordable housing, crime reduction, and economic mobility. Until we see meaningful investment in job creation and sustainable economic opportunities, spending public funds on projects that cater to a limited portion of the population is not just misguided, is an injustice and injustice. We call for the redirection of resources toward initiative that will lift our community out of poverty, create employment, and be a long-term wealth for Shreveport and Caddo Parish. Recreation, and of course, all we get is incarceration. We get no occupation. And that seems to be the mindset of America and the state of Louisiana. So when I see us continue to find recreational thing and opportunity, that is not a solution, though the excuse for not providing, what the statistics say, is a distraction and not a solution. Let all of us, regardless of race or sex or nationality or socioeconomic background, black, white, younger, poor, focus on a city and a state and a parish of inclusion by working together for best for all God's children. Let us focus on building jobs, income stability. Then we could talk about pickleball. When you do these kind of things, remember the people in the community do vote. We do have tax renewals, and we depend on a lot of the poor people that live in urban America, urban districts, that live in贫民地, that populated, that need these resources. So when you think about these type of initiatives, don't exclude rural and urban American children because they don't have a way to even get there. I hope that you reconsider, renegotiate, and think about the contract and the job. Black America needs it. Our black contractors need it. I pray that you do something for all of us and not just a select few. God bless you, and I pray that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card is Kathy Gojja.
Did I say my name, address, and all that stuff?
Yes, please.
Kathy Gojja, 9980 Mansfield Road, Keithville, Louisiana.
Thank you.
I oppose the idea to have to get a permit to put a manufactured home on your own property when we don't live in the city. I didn't understand.
No. It'll project for you. If you just come towards it, it will predict your voice.
All right. I oppose...
You agree, right there.
I oppose the idea of putting... Getting a permit or having to pay $350 to get a permit to put a manufactured home on your land in the country if you want a mobile home. And if I want to buy a double-wide for my grandchildren and put it in the backyard, I should be able to do so without asking the city's permission. And so we don't pay... I mean, we pay taxes on our property. Y'all don't pay our taxes, and we should be doing with our land what we want to do, to have chickens, or horses, or pigeons, or whatever. I don't see where it affects anybody in the city. And I have another question I need... Let me take a breath. I'd like some clarification on why my neighbor is allowed to have three full-size mobile homes on his residential property. He is a trailer park owner. I'm not a trailer park owner, but I live next door to him. And these trailers have been there for three... Since 2017. And they have people living in them, tenants living in them, family living in them, whatever. But to my understanding, it's against y'all's rules and against the law to have trailers in your residential yard, whether you're in the city or in the country. Or in the five-mile radius of whatever y'all's... So I know you can't answer my question, but I still have the question. So in the short... Story short, I oppose the idea of having to get a permit to put a mobile home on your land. So that's it.
Thank you. And Ms. Gojja, if you would stick around, we will be able to address that, just not at this time. We can't have dialect with you about your questions or comments.
So after the meeting?
It'll be during the meeting. We can address some of those.
I'll go here.
Okay, thank you. And as I call your name, if you would, please start to move to the front so that we can be respectful of the time here. The next card I will have is Ms. John Glover. Following that will be Scott Hughes.
Good evening, members of the commission. John Glover, 9100 Rocker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118.
Thank you.
All resolutions and ordinances to be presented to the commission shall be filed with the commission clerk by 1:00 p.m. on Thursday preceding the commission's work session meeting. Now, I read that from you all's rules and bylaws for the commission. And I did that because I went back and I read the minutes that whereby a discussion was had about a special resolution that had been addressed. And reading the words that describe what a special resolution was and what it actually addressed, it still bothered me because in your bylaws, it says, "All resolutions and ordinances to be presented to the commission shall be filed with the commission clerk." Now, if you had sufficient time, as was and was not addressed with the proclamation that has come to be a sore subject here in our parish, why wasn't... Why didn't you all adhere to your own process? Even though you may say special resolutions are ceremonial greetings, acknowledgements, commend... Excuse me, commemorations or recognitions of people, but you also said there is no form of definition of them or outlining of a process for adopting them. Well, that's not true. Because if it is, and we maintain under Article III of your rules and bylaws, Rule Number Two says you do have the ability to do that. And though it was said that the special resolution was mentioned in the bylaws, I didn't find it. And I read all 22 pages of the bylaws to make sure I did not overlook it. So what we have and what we can afford as citizens is for us trying to revise a process without justification. See, it would be different if you didn't have Rule Two of Article Three already on the books. And that's what you have been working on or working from all the time. And regardless of the examples in that July 3 minute that showed that previously this was done, it is not a justification nonetheless. So I'm going to ask each of you to make sure that when you bring or propose that you meet your own process, you meet your own rules, and you meet your own bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just received several more comment cards, and I know I have Mr. Scott Hughes that is coming up next. Mr. Parliamentarian, I have about 14 comment cards in reference to ordinance 6558. Can you give us an estimated time of what has already been used in that 15 minutes that is against?
The opposing side has about 12 minutes left. What I would recommend, Madam President, is if there are any principal speakers, any principal proponents, if you would speak amongst yourself on who will present your information. Once again, as you can see, we are definitely trying to adhere to our bylaws and our rules. So we want to be fair in that process. There's about 12 minutes left for the opposing side. We have not had anyone speak in favor for the ordinance yet.
Thank you. And I do have two that does not have a subject to be discussed, which is Pat Mason and Isaiah Carter. Isaiah Carter and Pat Mason. Okay. And you're for or against? For. Okay, so those two are for. Okay, so there will be 11. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Hughes. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott Hughes. I'm the CEO of the Realtor Association here in Northwest Louisiana, 2036 E70th Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. At this point, I'm really more against the ordinance. We know I have many questions I would like for y'all to answer. My general understanding is you are hopefully, from a process standpoint, looking to move it forward to Thursday, and it could not be finally adopted until sometime in September. And so if that is correct, we'd like to get a little more information because this is a pretty big change. The Realtor Association has long stood for the right of private property. If you go back in the history of this country, the right to have your acreage and build a home is an American right and our concern... And I hear two different things. I hear a fee, and I hear taking away a property right. And to us, those are two different things. We don't come often and talk about fees. We don't like fees. But we've long deferred municipalities and boards to set your own fees, and most housing types have some fee registration. But as we understand the legislation, it would take away the right by use if you were in an RA zone to use a mobile home, to manufactured home. There really aren't many more mobile homes anymore. They're called manufactured homes. There are designations for mobile and manufactured. I'm sure you're aware of that. And as you're probably aware, this is really one of the top-growing house types in the country. And if you don't know the numbers here in Caddo Parish, in 2019, the average home in Caddo Parish was somewhere around 180,000, whatever you call the average home 3-2. Today, that number is 250,000. And so affordable housing is a huge issue, and this is an area where we've been able to actually see affordable housing for many people. So I ask that question, is this more about the fee or is this more about taking away a right by use? Because as we've watched this issue for years, what we see is people decide to move outside of municipality. They move to RA, rural agricultural land. They build on their property. And then some of them build very nice houses, and good for them. And then they decide that they want to oppose somebody else having that same American right on the land next door. And it seems like this time, the issue is manufactured homes. And I only have three minutes, so I'm not going to read through your list. But if I remember your list, there are all kinds of other things that already have use by right in a rural agricultural area. A cemetery, a church, an animal shelter, a nursing home, a school. You could have a public outdoor event complex. Somebody can put up a cell tower right next to my house. Those are used by rights. But the one use you want to change, as we understand this ordinance, is the use for someone to build a home and to live on their own land. And so before we get to Thursday and maybe two weeks from now, that's just one of the fundamental questions I'd like to see y'all address is, is it about the fee or is it about taking away a right of a citizen? Now, we've always said inside the municipal lines, if this was an issue on Line Avenue, that's a different issue. That's trying to put a mobile home where we always had zoning. If this was a C or an I in the zoning code, that's different. That's putting commercial or industrial next to R, residential. But when you start out and the zoning is RA, and you want to take away somebody's right for what is unzoned land, I think we're going to have a little concern with that. And so I want to close quickly and ask some other quick questions. Godfathering, are you going to godfather in? And then what will be your process ultimately? And the big question is, if you don't pass today, what happens to the ordinance?
Thank you. The next card is Steve Duke.
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Hughes. Mr. Hughes.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, should I say. I left early this morning from Baton Rouge.
Good afternoon. If you would, please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Steve Duke. I'm Executive Director and General Counsel for the Manufactured Housing Association. Some of the members asked me to actually come up this way to kind of help talk a little bit about the product and stuff and at least try and help you guys. If there's any way we can get to this. We're passing out some pictures. I'd like for everybody, if you get a chance, we've got about three sets I'm floating around. But the thing is, what I would ask you is like it's somewhat discriminatory, we feel like. If you look at this by right, you can actually take a manufactured home, or a modular home, rather, which is built to the state code, and move it in. And I would suggest something to you. After Hurricane Katrina, we put five houses next to our building in Baton Rouge to help the folks in New Orleans. We did it within a short period of time. And of those houses that you can look at, you know, there was probably approximately 1,000 people that were elected officials from all over the place. There was building officials from all over the place. You know what? I've only found one person in my 37 years being around the industry that could identify and tell you what the differences were. And it was a shame that basically we were discriminating against a product that is both affordable and attainable, and it's quality housing. I've got pictures in the back, and I know we're limited on time. And there's a bunch more people here that need to talk, and I don't want to talk too long. But I wanted to tell you this. There's a shortage, a severe shortage. If you looked at what our Secretary of HUD, the Reverend Scott Turner, just got appointed recently, Dynamic Speaker, he's super smart. But he's talked about the critical, critical shortage of affordable housing in this country. The numbers that I've heard are anywhere from 5 million to 20 million. And the question becomes, you've got people, certainly there's a lot sitting in this room, but people in this community. And I'm not here to tell you how to run things, but you know, I'm from Baton Rouge, and I don't want to come in and tell you that I've got all the answers. But what I would tell you is this, you know, I would be happy to bring somebody in here that can help explain a lot of the differences. If you can look at those pictures and stuff, the funny thing was, I told everybody that came through, all the building code officials and everybody else, that there's three modular homes and two manufactured there. I've given you four, and there's four of them that I brought today because I had to get them sent to me this morning. But what I would tell you is that, you know, of those pictures and stuff, two of them are HUD code, and two of them are modular, built to the state code that's allowed in any residential district in the state. And I would ask you to tell me, can you pick them out? The amazing thing was, with 1,000 people coming through, only one person could tell me. He was a building engineer that knew, and he did something that I didn't even know to do that helped him pick it out. But you know, I would ask you, the funny thing was, all the building code people that came through said, well, they could pick out one manufactured home. That's the white one that you see in there. The rest of them, you know, they couldn't pick out. And what we got to at the end was, they said, well, which one's the other manufactured home? And I said, well, I'll tell you what. You go look at all of them, and you tell me which one you would like. And damn near to the person that came through, and the one that everybody wanted, if they could pick one house that they wanted, it was the other manufactured home. And what I would ask you to do is to take into consideration, and I know you do. I know that your heart's in the right place. But we've got people that need affordable housing. And right now, in the area up here in Shreveport, Caddo, Bossier, it's like there's probably, you know, 61% I think homeownership. And one of the biggest impediments to people being able to buy a home is the cost. And I know everybody's aware of that. And I know there's so many people in the room right now that are worried about cost. And I think it's difficult when you start reaching into the RA district and start saying that people cannot, you know, they're going to have to get their neighbors to sign off on something before they can have a hearing. Can you imagine how many... I know y'all have a lot of hearing and people that come up in front of you. Can you imagine how many you're going to have if you start doing this with every single one of them? We've got to find a way to do it. And what I'm willing, and what I'm committing to you today...
Point of order. Your time is far spent.
My time's up?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. At any rate, last thing I would tell you is, I'm willing to bring somebody in at our expense to help educate everybody here on the commission, if you guys are willing to let us come in and do that. And I'm, you know, again, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer questions at your convenience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Holly Richards.
Madam President, point of order, I do want to make sure we know that this is the... will be the fourth person speaking in opposition, I assume?
Ms. Richards, are you speaking in favor or opposition?
Opposition. Holly Richards, 3603 Alma Road, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Thank you.
I oppose the government overreach that there's plenty of empty spaces in Shreveport and why y'all going outside the city limits and messing with homeowners. Don't make a lot of sense. All these empty buildings and spaces, you could allow people tiny homes. You could help get senior, as short as people living in their cars and everything else. I mean, make this make sense. I don't think if you're a taxpayer and you're a law-abiding citizen, you should be tampered with, especially. Like I said, why don't y'all clean up your city before you start messing with people outside of the city? And I give the rest of my time to Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Jill Brown.
I'm going to be real bit brief on this. I am totally opposed to this.
State your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Jill Brown, 10181 McElroy Drive.
Thank you.
Keithville. I live in the last five mi... The last neighborhood of the five-mile radius. So I'm like barely inside that five-mile radius. I didn't know anything about the UDC code when I bought this property. And had I known, I probably would have never bought in Caddo Parish, ever. But I did, and I learned real quickly about the UDC code. I learned all about Allen Clark and the MPC. I learned all about the Caddo Commission. When I learned all this, though, I learned a lot of faces on this board. Some are new now, some are not. But the one thing that has changed is y'all have become untouchable. I have not found one phone number online for any of y'all. I was prepared this morning to pick up a telephone so you could hear my heart. But guess what? There's no phone number available except for this one right here, and I've got his phone number. He probably wishes that he didn't, but you know. But I got... I sent out emails to every one of you this morning. I got one response back from Chris. Y'all become untouchable. We are the ones that put you in the seats that y'all are in. You need to listen to us. We are here telling you what we want. Can you listen?
Thank you. Jessica Tullis.
Jessica Tullis, 52474 Primitive Baptist, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107.
Thank you.
Going to make it super, super quick. I already stated my name. I'm with Caddo Alliance for Freedom.
It'll project for you.
Okay. Some of y'all know me, some may not. There's a couple new faces on here. I'm asking that each one of y'all vote no on this mobile home permit. This rule doesn't target the wealthy. It targets working families, seniors, and young people trying to get a start. For many, a mobile home is the only affordable path to owning land and a home. Adding permits, fees, and red tape makes that dream harder, if not impossible. I've sat on porches personally. I've knocked on doors. I've spoken with over 1,000 of our neighbors in different parishes... I mean, different parts of the parish. Everything is the same. We don't... We moved to the country to be left alone. We don't want folks telling us what to do on our own land. If someone wants HOA-style restrictions, that's fine. They can go live in a subdivision, live in the city of Shreveport, or get an HOA started. But it's unfair to force those rules on rural people who came here to be left alone. And let's be clear. This hits the middle-class and lower-income families the hardest. Are we wanting affordable homeownership? That's the way to make Shreveport better because they're going to take pride in their homes. And this is not going to get on there. I ask y'all to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several cards left, and we have about 17 seconds left for the remaining time on those who are here to speak. those who are here to speak against this ordinance. And if you would like to yield your time, as I call these names, you may. If not, you're welcome to take the remaining time. I have Constance Green. Would you like to yield your time or speak?
She's for.
Are you for or against? Okay. You have about 17 seconds left.
Madam President, if it pleases, there are 33 seconds left from a previous speaker that I would like to add.
Okay. So that will give you about a minute. If you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Constance L. Green. I reside at the 4475 Rice Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So 60 seconds. Well-
Starts now.
I do understand everything that's been stated thus far. But many of you lived here and lived here under the Keith Hattile era. And there were beautiful homes built at that time, and that's pretty much been the large major, uh, affordable living that we've had. So I'm not against any of that, but many of us did move in the RA zone and, uh, to have the privacy of whatever we want on our lands. My point today is, the rules keep changing. There is, there is, there is no, uh, fundamental process of what goes on. Is whoever brings it up today, then we're going to take it at hand. So I do agree, um, with everyone, but I also agree the fact that, um, I live within the five mile radius and about five years ago, seven years ago, something of that nature, we packed this place. And this mobile home, um, manufacturer home, or whatever you want to call it, the concept is the same. But we do need some standards. We do need some bylaws and we do need some rules that we can all follow. But to find out at the last meeting that we've got a, uh, a circumstance going on that we, the people, know nothing about, but it impacts our living and our living arrangements.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
So I know that, um, and our living arrangements. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion that we extend five minutes for the whole side of the argument, the opposition side of this argument?
Um, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to extend the time by five minutes to allow the remaining five cards, one minute basically apiece?
That's the opposition side, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, does that pass by acclamation or there's any opposition? Okay. So the time has been extended. The next card I have is Hunter Duke.
Information on that.
Yes, sir.
So does this mean that the lady who was just here, that she's going to get a little bit more time? Because we kind of cut her off after one minute.
No, we have-
We got you.
So. I travel and, uh, I am the big person for the big Shreveport, Louisiana, so I'm not leaving. But unfortunately, my children that lived here, they don't want to come back. We get out the airport, we want to see some beautiful surroundings, we want to see some beautiful greenery, and we don't want to see a lot of homelessness, but we know that there is some. So if you're going to make some rules or change the bylaws with housing, let's make it, um, a systematic process where everybody gets to know. So those of us that own acreage or those, whether it's a lot or whether, whatever it is, well, I want to share this with you. When I moved to the Rice Road, it was just the beautiful greenery, the beautiful trees, the beautiful everything. And now everybody wants to move to Rice Road. So, um, I'm just simply saying, I'm not about whatever a person wants to do with their land, but we need to have some kind of systematic process so people can know what they want to do. I built and I bought on Rice Road for exactly what it is. And so, um, I'm not against manufactured homes, I'm not against any of that. But we've got now three properties up for sale. And so had my neighbor not called on this one, I wouldn't have known anything. So let's get real about it. We all want nice communities, we all want nice developments, whatever that is to our niceness. Let us make some of those decisions. You don't live there, how you know what's good for us? And so that what we're seeing right now is, that may be your decision, but until you live there and you bought that property and you buy into it, you can't make those decisions. And you can't keep changing the rules. So we're here to say is, we're not leaving Shreveport. We're not le- moving past, out past the five year radius or whatever this is that you all opposing. We want our city to have value in it. We want it to have a million dollar homes plus. And for the people who-
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had two minutes right on the bar. Good job.
You have, if you would, thank you. Stop the clock, if you would, back it up to two minutes and 48 seconds for the remaining cards. All right. Hunter Duke.
Hello, Hunter Duke. I, uh, work with the Louisiana Manufactured Housing Association. Um, do I need to say my address?
Yes, state your name and address.
10211 Westwood Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to cover a couple of quick statistics, uh, in regards to homeownership in Shreveport and then some of the blighted areas around, uh, Shreveport and then Caddo. Um, like Steve said, Steve Duke said earlier, homeownership rate is around 61, 62%. The supply of sub $200,000 homes is very low in, uh, Shreveport and in Caddo compared to statewide. Um, here we go. There are limited land banks, as seen in other municipalities, but lots are available. The state has more than 12,200 lots listed on Zillow. Shreveport has right at 717 lots. But if you get into the blighted numbers, there, uh, there is blighted lots in municipalities available for redevelopment. Shreveport has over 7,000 of these. You can check some of these numbers on Zillow and other places like that. Uh, Louisiana doesn't seem to have a formal land bank for state or individual municipalities, but these contacts, uh, may be of some assistance. And so, in short, uh, manufactured ha- housing is the answer for a lot of inner city issues across the country. We don't see too much of a difference here than we do, you know, if you go over to Florida or Texas or Michigan. Um, and so with that, I, I guess I'll yield the rest of my time unless I have any questions, but thank y'all for, uh, listening to us today.
Thank you. The next card is Floyd Jones. You're not here? Are you for or against?
I'm against.
Okay.
Floyd Jones, uh, worked for Rural Home Center, 3830 Texas Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm from the salespeople. I deal with the people that come in day to day, whether it's a family member, whether it's a young person or older person that's looking for a place to stay, they can't afford the rent, they can't afford the housing prices, that's everything that you guys have heard. And then we go through all of the stuff and only to go through something like this that's going to make it more challenging for these people to get affordable homes. So it makes it harder for me to provide for my family because I sell them these homes. And if we go through this process and create all of this extra stuff, it's just, you know, it's just hurting us all. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that time? That was time? That was one minute and 16 seconds. Okay. That will be all that are in opposition. At this time, I will call those who are for, Pat Mason. You would be next.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm Pat Mason. I'm at 317 Haynes in Shreveport.
Thank you.
Um, so I just called on today because I think I offer a unique perspective. Whoop, can you hear me?
Yes, just step up to the mic and it'll project for you.
Okay. I think I offer a perspective both as a military member and also a Shreveport native. I lived in Shreveport for 25 years and I was a combat pilot for over 10. I think that this provides an opportunity, um, on both sides of the aisle for shared opportunity. And I think those opportunities extend beyond the athlete. I think they provide services and, and just an opportunity for both sides to work together on how to benefit the local community. I think that from a military side, people that are living here via orders, um, it gives them some extra zeal in our community and hopefully that is brought back to their, uh, state that they're native from. And I think as a, uh, person growing up in Shreveport, it's just one more additional opportunity for us to kind of have pride in our city. And I just think it's important. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Madam President, um, could you tell us what the, um, topic of his comment was?
He was speaking in favor of ordinance 6558.
He was talking about pickleball.
Pickleball? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So I made, I asked, I made a request in the beginning if you were here to speak in favor or against the ordinance 6558. So that's where I got that comment from, because that's what I heard. So we corrected that, that was for pickleball. Um, Isaiah, are you here to speak about pickleball or 6558?
Pickleball.
Okay. All right. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Isaiah Cage, 317 Haynes Avenue, Shreveport.
Cates.
Cates.
Cates. Okay.
Uh, I would like to comment on that first gentleman's, uh, suit. I don't remember what his name was, however, he made a key comment, I think. He said, there are people and other aspects of this community that are deserving of financial attention. And what I think people forget about the pickleball is that this project is not funded by the taxpayers, but it does bring in tax money that can be re, uh, used to, uh, give attention to those people and aspects of the community who are under, underrepresented. And I am somebody who grew up in this community, born in this community, have lived here my entire life, went to Sussla and have created a business here 18 months ago. And, uh, I just don't understand why myself or other people in this committee would continue to invest if the political leaders are not investing in the community, especially when it's use, use of bonds and of no harm to the taxpayers. And that's my question I leave you with. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. The next card I have is Amy M.
Miranda.
Miranda?
Miranda.
Miranda?
Yes.
All right. Fancy handwriting here. We couldn't figure it out.
Yes.
Are you here to speak about pickleball, right?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Amy Miranda. My address is 7538 University Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. And I am speaking for pickleball courts. Um, as a mom of four in the community, um, this is something really important to my whole family. We play pickleball constantly. Um, we love it and not just me and my kids, but their friends, my parents, um, cousins, uncles, aunts, all the things. And it's just, we don't have enough to do for our kids in the area. Like, I mean, it's, it's bad. And so giving my kids something fun to do, it's easy to learn, you don't have to have professional lessons or camps or anything, like all ages can enjoy it. And even the equipment is really cheap to find. I've played it, um, I have siblings that live in Texas and they have courts everywhere and it's just really fun to, it's a good way to meet other people in the community. Um, so it's the fastest growing sport in America. It would draw visitors to our area. Um, when I have friends and family that come, it'd be something for me to show them to do. It would bring revenue in. Um, and it would promote a healthy lifestyle, exercise, fitness, fun, community. Um, so just in closing, by adding pickleball courts, Shreveport can provide a low cost, high impact amenity that benefits families, seniors, youth and our local economy. This is an investment in our health and our city's future. I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us, uh, to visitors, and we have no scheduled visitors today, so we can move forward, uh, to reports, um, where we do have an administration report attached as well as the July financials.
All right. Mrs. CEO.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I just want to notify you that, um, Saturday, November 22nd is the date that we've scheduled for the food distribution. You all, um, passed the ordinance, um, for that, uh, early in the year. And so, um, we've, uh, worked with the Food Bank in November 22nd. That is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Um, juvenile detention numbers, there are 18 in detention, one 17-year-old, one OJJ, 20, uh, youth at CCC, 453 probation cases. You should have the, um, June financials at your station or July, through July, financials at your station. And now I want to bring Mr., uh, the Facilities and Maintenance Director, Maurice Carson, uh, to the podium. And he's going to make an announcement about the new Assistant Director of Facilities and Maintenance.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I just want to, uh, introduce and congratulate, um, uh, Jacob Sepulvedo, uh, as his new Assistant Director for Facilities and Maintenance. He has had a long career with, uh, Caddo Parish and, uh, just want to bring him up and introduce him.
Hello. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity. I can't look forward to adding to working with all y'all. So, man, a few words.
Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jacob. Um, we think that that's a wonderful choice and, uh, Mr. Sepulvedo, he has worked for us a number of years and it is the parish's goal whenever we can to, uh, bring up people through the ranks. And, um, Jacob has worked for us a number of years and so we're looking forward to working with him in his new role. And that concludes the administration report.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for administration? I don't see anyone on the board. Kay. Vice President, Emerson is next. It's okay. Commissioner Ron Carthren.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam CEO, can you go through those numbers concerning, uh, the individuals that are incarcerated? One more time, slowly, so everybody-
Detain.
I always get the question.
Detain.
And I always get the question after the meeting, it's like, I don't know, she said them so fast. Please.
Yes, sir. 18 in detention. One of those is 17-year-old, one is OJJ. That is a much lower number than we usually experience. There are 20 at CCC and we have 453 probation cases.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vice President, Emerson.
Mr. Carson, I'd just like to, uh, thank you for taking my call a couple of weekends ago while you were off relative to a situation of a senior citizen. And, uh, that issue was resolved. Thank you once again, sir.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Madam, uh, Madam Administrator, could you tell us also what the, uh, to the best of your knowledge, it could be a ballpark number, what the population at CCC is at present? Or could you get us that for Thursday?
Well, I haven't heard that it decreased significantly, so it would still probably be 14 to 15.
High 14 hundreds.
High 14 hundreds.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But now I don't have that number.
Thank you very much. And I also wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Sepulvedo, do you have a relative named Chad?
No.
Okay. You look a lot like a Chad Sepulvedo I went to middle school with. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, madam. Madam President, uh, Madam Administrator, were you able to get any information from AT&amp;T on whether or not they are burying broadband in, in our community? Because I went home today and I had three holes in my yard and, um, and throughout the neighborhood, it looked like they're burying cable. I, I spoke with, uh, some of the workers out there and they said that they were burying cable, but I wasn't sure whether it was broadband. I saw an AT&amp;T truck. Uh, nobody is, is, uh, making any contact with the residents who are there. They just coming home and you got a four foot, four foot hole in your yard, trenches in your yard. And, um, I need, I need some explanation so I can talk to them about it.
Yes, sir. I have not gotten that information yet, but I will get on that today. I haven't gotten additional information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. See no one else on the board? Okay. Okay.
And I need, I need some explanation so I can talk to them about it.
Yes, sir. I have not gotten that information yet, but I will get on that today. I haven't gotten additional information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. See no one else on the board? Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to Commission Remarks, Communicates, Reports, and Other Items Related to the Work Session Agenda.
All right. Vice President Emerson.
I'd just like to share, I don't know how many of you heard that AT&amp;T has a class action suit that's been settled relative to a breach of data from their customers. And I don't know how many of you are AT&amp;T users, but I am. And I have received a significant number of spam calls. And it's possible that those are directly correlated to the data breach. So let's make sure that we make our senior citizens aware of these calls. They are coming from the 318 area. I've contacted Mr. David Aubrey, who's a long-term friend of ours and worked with AT&amp;T out of Dallas, and forwarded those numbers to him. The names will pop up, come up Dry Prong, Louisiana, Winfield, Prairieville, Rayville. So be mindful of those, and please tell senior citizens to be mindful of them, too. Also, our Public Works Director, if you will put on your calendar September 19th and 20th, we will be holding our Fall Cleanup West Shreveport and West Caddo. We would certainly like the Caddo Parish War on Litter vehicle to be available. And we'll use the same protocol as we've used the last 20 years or so that we've been doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take a moment to respond again to some comments that were made about pickleball. First, I'd like to point out that, I won't say the type, but I would say just the age group of the people who have come to comment about pickleball in favor of it, which I find exciting. There are people under 40 here in this chamber who have come here on purpose to tell us that we were about to do something good. I cannot remember the last time that happened. Sometimes we get people under 40 coming in here, but it's usually because we have a special resolution that summons them to be honored. People are coming here voluntarily to say, "Please invest in our city. We want more stuff to do that's safe. We want more stuff to do that's healthy. We want to be like the other places where people are moving to, where they have healthy, fun stuff to do." I want everyone to remember that Shreveport and Caddo Parish are losing population. We are not going anywhere, but a lot of people are. The people who remain behind and who are stuck here, like this government, we're staying, are the people left to make investments in improving this community for our future. Many people who could have made those investments have left. It's up to us to make investments in our future. Pickleball is a growing sport, and it attracts young people from other places to play in tournaments. That is economic development. It is one of the classic forms of economic development that this body does. We support sports. We support the Independence Bowl for like 70 years now. We support the YMCA ball fields. We do all sorts of things to try to bring tourists here. And pickleball is tourism. We can't invest in a beach. We're not going to get a beach. We can't invest in mountains. We can't build a mountain. But we can create a fantastic, tournament-grade pickleball park that has something for everybody, including picnic tables and walking track for me, because I'm not going to play any pickleball because I have a hurt knee. That's the only reason. And people will come here and enjoy it. And we can do it by using bond money that the citizens here don't have to pay for. The people who will purchase these bonds purchase them from bond exchanges in bundles, and they could be anywhere in the world. They could be in Hong Kong, investing in Shreveport, in the government, because we have a good bond rating, and we're going to pay them back. This does not take tax money. What it takes is the credit that we have from managing our tax money well under Administrator Bryant and her predecessors for so many years. This is not tax money. Some people have said they don't want to vote for this because their constituents don't know enough about it. Well, everybody has the opportunity for the next two weeks to tell their constituents everything about it. Everybody has the opportunity to tell their constituents that they voted for us to come here and make the detailed decisions. This is not, every constituent gets a vote about pickleball. That's not the way the system works. Our voters picked us to come and sit in these chairs and decide whether or not to make investments in our future. I think we need to make investments in our future because I'm only a little bit over 40 myself, and I want to have a city to live in when I'm 60. I want there to be people here still. And they're not going to stay if we continue to pass on every opportunity, every single opportunity, like spending bond money to make a fantastic park that draws in tourism and creates jobs from everything the tourists buy. Everything they eat, everywhere they stay. Those are jobs. Those create jobs. If you want to have economic growth, you need to have people coming here with their money, not, not just trying to use the money that we have as our population dissipates. So I want to thank everyone who came to speak in favor of pickleball. I would like for people who are opposed to pickleball to continue to educate themselves about what the money source is and listen to the comments that have been made about what the money source is, because it is not taxes, and it cannot just be spent on a project that's not going to bring in any revenue, because then the parish is going to end up in a big financial hole. So I want to encourage everyone to be bold and move this forward and support pickleball and growth in Caddo Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Grace Anne Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank everyone that has come out and spoken in support of pickleball. I would like to point out that we have a very young woman in the audience. And to have somebody that is not an adult but cares greatly about an opportunity for their future, that really means the world to me. Today is August 18th. It represents the anniversary of the women's right to vote. So to see a young woman sitting out here about something she loves to do, that to me is a vote. I would like to share with everybody a letter that came to me, and I believe to all of the Commissioners today. And I would like to read it to everyone. Dear Caddo Parish Commissioners, on behalf of the State of Louisiana, I am writing to express my full support for the development of the Caddo Parish Pickleball Park in Shreveport. This project represents far more than a recreational amenity. It is a strategic investment in the economic and cultural vitality of northwest Louisiana. Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States. And the creation of a dedicated facility of this scale presents an outstanding opportunity for Shreveport to emerge as a premier destination for tournaments and regional events. These events are proven to generate meaningful economic activity, driving revenue to local hotels, casinos, restaurants, and retail businesses. Beyond the immediate economic benefits, hosting pickleball tournaments and recreational events will introduce a broad audience to Shreveport's rich culture, unique attractions, and southern hospitality, encouraging return visits, and positive word-of-mouth tourism. This development also aligns with our long-term goals of enhancing quality of life, promoting active lifestyles, and investing in infrastructure that attracts residents, visitors, and businesses alike. Facilities like the Caddo Parish Pickleball Park play an essential role in positioning Louisiana communities as vibrant, forward-thinking places to live and visit. I am confident this project will serve as a catalyst for sustained economic development and sports tourism in the region. I strongly encourage your favorable consideration of this proposal and stand ready to support the advancement of this important initiative. If I can be of any assistance to you in any way, please do not hesitate to call. Sincerely, Billy Nungesser, Lieutenant Governor. Earlier today, and I'd like to comment, there was a woman that came in and said that we didn't respond to an email. I'd like to say that most of us spent the afternoon in here working for Caddo Parish. So when we, before we have work sessions, we have other work committee meetings. And I like to attend as many as I can, even if I'm not on the committee, so I can understand what's going on within the parish. And today, in our Economic Committee, we had a speaker come speak on behalf of Curtis Jackson in G Unit. And we were grateful for people having a vision and wanting to invest in our community. And we, as a whole, commented on how many people prior that actually live here have not used vision, or they have torn down vision. This is something that, since I became a Commissioner, I learned of. And I'd like to restate that our administration has done a great job of gathering information to create a project that is a project that will help all of Caddo Parish. And it will help bring revenue in to pay for things that we have issues with, like infrastructure problem, helping our juvenile justice program. So I ask everybody to please trust our administration. Also, to please take the time to find out about all of the letters of support coming from people across the state that understand the economic benefits that are so far-reaching that they really can help generational change and partnering with other opportunities that are currently happening in the city of Shreveport and the parish. This is a perfect time to seize a piece of sports tourism to help bring in economic long-term change for our families, for our small businesses, and for the large companies that are planning to come to this region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. My colleagues, Commissioner Young and Commissioner Blake, have spoken about the advantages of pickleball, so I won't elaborate too much on that. But I would like to say that I do plan to support this project. I am supporting the project. I believe that on occasion, it's important to invest back in a community. I think it's important to try to make our community unique in some specific ways. And this seems to be, based on the study done by Mr. Wesley and his team, this seems to be a highly desirable project by our citizens. So I think it's something that we, that we should invest in and can invest in. When I say can, I want to remind everybody, as was mentioned earlier, these are revenue bonds. They are designed to be paid back, serviced, shall we say, through the revenue generated by the project. Ms. Barnett, our CFO, has done the analysis. She's studied the numbers. I've also checked those numbers to make sure I was comfortable with those numbers. You know, if we get, if we get decent utilization, this should pay out our, our bond obligation. If there's a glitch and we don't get the utilization that we want, there's still, we have other sources of revenue that can handle this, this coverage, handle any gap in payment without damaging our credit rating, without damaging our operations. We have enough flexibility in our budget to allow this to happen without endangering the finances of the, of the parish. And let me just remind everybody that, that our parish is a AA+ rated parish with respect to the bonding agencies. It's very high a rating, and we've earned that high rating thanks to the work of Ms. Bryant and Ms. Barnett over the years, who have, who have done a great job of working with Commissioners and educating Commissioners and counseling us on how we spend money. And so I trust that they are not leading us wrong in this particular case. I think we should do it, and I think we can do it. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Vice President Emerson.
I'd just like to share that the Public Safety Committee meeting met today at 2:00 PM. Our agenda was, we invited Erin Buchanan and an engineer from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. Many of us have received a lot of complaints, as well as personal observations, about the deplorable condition of trash, litter, and of I-20, I-220, 3132, and I-49. We were given some very good information, and we have a handout. And for those citizens that would like it, I'd like for you to contact the Clerk's Office, and they can get you a digital copy of it, as well as the presentation. We have, we received a lot of information as to why the conditions of those particular main roads that come through Caddo Parish are in the condition that they are in. So we also gave and looked for an update on our Caddo Parish Disaster Response and Recovery booklet that we put out about a month ago. We're looking for revisions or any changes that the citizens may share, any other Commissioners. So please contact the Caddo Parish Clerk's Office and get a digital copy of that presentation by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Emerson. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner President Stormy Cage-Watt invited a gentleman with G Unit, the principal, a front person for G Unit, came today and presented himself before the Economic Development Committee. And since this gentleman was the invite of our president, I would like for her to essentially just inform the public as to how that particular visit went. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will hold that information to share in the President's Report. Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Ron Carthren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the absence of Commissioner Jones, who is the Chair of the Juvenile Justice and Related Services Committee, we had a meeting today as well. And there were four particular topics that we contacted. How to reduce underage vape sales. We also talked about domestic violence. We also talked about protective orders and the Children and Youth Planning Board update. The most significant things I would share that came out of this is they, looking at a proclamation or ordinance to ask that the, a resolution correction, the 14, 15-page protection order be limited, because as you know, we've had a lot of domestic violence cases in a very present time, in which I think, at this particular time, eight women have been killed in the last few months or so of this particular year. So the thing is, those are some of the things that we are looking at to assist with the juvenile justice. And the thing is, you might say, "Well, what does domestic violence have to do with it?" It starts, if I'm a child and I see certain things going on in my house, guess what? It's going to probably carry over. So these are some of the things that we are looking at right now. And we solicit the assistance from the public as well, anything that you know, anything that we could be doing different. And we will be getting with the Shreveport Boja Task Force as well to utilize them, and also the youth, what's their name? The Committee we just...
PYJ?
No, your kids. Your kids.
The Youth Advisory Council.
Yeah, Youth Advisory Council. We'll be using them as well to take this message out to young, younger adults as well. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthren. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to remind the public there will be a meeting of, excuse me, Stony Hill Neighborhood Association tonight at 5:30, as well as the North Island Neighborhood Association. And that meeting is going to be from 6:00 until 7:30 at the North Shreveport Branch. I'm going to be leaving you guys here soon because one of the most important things I think is important for us to understand is, while we are here to make decisions, we are here to listen to those people in our district. They have elected us to not only make those decisions, but to also echo and amplify their voices. It's very important for us to have a responsibility to educate our citizens, not only educate them, but to provide them with factual information. I want to thank Administration for providing me with the information that I requested. When I go to these meetings, I'm going to present the pickleball information to them as well, the amenities and the pros for this project. But I'm going to be very mindful of what those citizens say and what their response is to this. I've said it before, and I'll say it again publicly and on record, I am for growth, and I'm for pickleball. But I do- But I do have those citizens to listen to, and I do have their will and their wishes on my conscience. So that's where my vote will go accordingly, based upon what those citizens in my district Outside of that, I really, really, I'm really glad to see the amount of people that have come in today. I always say this every meeting, and I want to let people know, if you're unable to attend, you are able to fill out a comment card online, and we'd love to hear your feedback. As Commissioner Blake stated, sometimes we appreciate your emails, but sometimes we're not as able to respond to your emails as quickly as, you know, as possible, or as what you would like. But we do see them. We do try to give deference and let your Commissioner respond to you. But we appreciate your voices, and they're very, very needed in these debates, especially as it relates to citizens' comments. It really, really hurts that sometimes we're not able to respond immediately to your concerns. But thank you nonetheless for coming down. Thank you for providing us that feedback, because it definitely helps and it definitely impacts our decisions. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Do I see any other Commissioners on the board? Okay, next item.
Okay, that brings us to President's Report. Did you have a President's Report today?
Sure. The first thing I would like to say is, in response to Commissioner Greg Young's meeting at the Economic Development Meeting today, he began to tell you about the presentation and the discussion that was provided by Orville Hall, which is a representative of G Unit. And he was able to give us an extensive background on who he is and what his plans are for Shreveport, for Caddo Parish, and the surrounding Northwest Louisiana area. We were happy to discuss how we can partner with them on this venture and welcome them to what we have already coined as the destination location of Northwest Louisiana, which is Caddo Parish. We're looking forward to seeing some of the projects come into fruition. It has been a plan that he's been working on for almost 10 years, and it has come full circle within the last 12 months after the Huge Humor in Harmony Weekend, which will be another event coming forward in 2026. Looking forward to touring Caddo Parish with him very soon. And he also gave us an update on where 50 Cent is, and I concluded by saying, welcome to the big rich town. Thank you for the update, Commissioner Carthorn, that I was going to give in Commissioner Jones' absence. There was one item that was on the agenda that should have been on our agenda today, and I'm going to ask that we'll go ahead and get a letter ready if we don't have time to pass that resolution. This was an item that we brought back from the forum on domestic violence that was held by the Shreveport Chief of Police, Chief Wayne Smith. And one of the items was about streamlining the process on protective orders for domestic violence victims, and we had a great conversation, weighed in on it, and that is one way that we can definitely put our hands to the plow. I want to yield most of the remaining time in my report to answer some of the questions and some of the comments that were made in reference to this ordinance. And I know that one of the questions was, and I wanted to make sure that I understood, and I'm not sure if she's still here or not, she's still here? Yes, she is. She's sitting right there. And the question was about what you could do to your land, what you can do to your land, and you wanted to get some information of how to get someone off of the property with the mobile homes?
Are you talking about, my question was in regard to, my neighbor's trailer park had an additional, three trailers brought in that were not grandfathered in in 2017 and put into his residential yard, which are not 50 feet from my property, as the rules go, when new trailers are brought in. And yet, two inspectors told me they could not stay there. And I want to know if they're permanent, if they're temporary, if he has open spots in his trailer park, why he hasn't moved them there yet, if they're temporary? Why he put concrete slabs and scardine around them and has tenants living in them that are, you know, when I open my front door, here comes his tenant.
All right. That's what I wanted to make sure I got some clarity on, because I know you did say...
Put attention on that. Anything else you need to ask me?
No, I was making sure that that was your question. You wanted to find out the information of how do you, I guess, provide a complaint or variance to figure out how they're on their property? So I'm going to get Mr. Clark up here to kind of address some of that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I heard that, but you don't want to be told what to do with your land.
Well, no, I object to having to pay $350 for a permit to put a double-wide on my back property, not in my residential yard, which is against the rules. You know, if I've got, you know, a big spot of land and want to buy my grandkid a trailer and say, go, you know, you can't afford this city stuff, you know? In the future, I might not want to buy it, but I still should have the right to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clark, if you would, come forward. I want to address some of the questions that's been raised. Thank you. You can have a seat. Thank you so much.
Okay.
About this ordinance, and if I'm correct, this is to advance an introduction, and this is a revision. This is not 6558?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. These are items that I'm sure that we discussed at Lent through the UDC? And is this an expansion to this, to these items? If you will, give us an update.
Are we speaking in reference to the special exception use for manufactured housing?
Yes.
I'd need to share with you all, because the MPC will be blamed for this, but the MPC had nothing to do with this. There were citizens on Rice Road, which I was very offended that none of them came and spoke to you. They asked us to put an ordinance amendment on the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission's agenda to make manufactured housing an RA like they are in all the other residential districts. So we developed a COTEX amendment, making RA, when there's a manufactured home, going on RA zone property, a special exception use, which would require a public hearing. They felt that they wanted public input into whether or not these manufactured homes were allowed. We did that, and the ordinance, there was a motion to approve the ordinance, but the ordinance was defeated. So we're through with it. It's in you all's hands at this point. But we've done nothing but follow the request of citizens out on Rice Road.
Okay. And in reference to the question that was asked about the rules to the trailer park, did you understand those questions?
I have no idea what they were talking about there. No rule changes. The only thing that happened was the ordinance that I shared with you, that RA rural agriculture is the only residential district in the city or the parish where it does not require a special exception use approval to place a mobile home, a manufactured home, on a piece of property. And all we did, because as you know, the five, up to five miles outside the city limits of Shreveport, unincorporated land, we have no jurisdiction whatsoever. We respect House Bill 697. We abide by House Bill 697, and all we did was add a request of citizens, and I think that's what you all would want us to do, we placed that on the agenda and let the Caddo Parish Planning Commission deal with the application.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there any other questions for Mr. Clark while he's here? Commissioner Carthorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had an opportunity to look at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on July 23rd for about an hour, hour and a half or so. And the thing is, I heard a lot of concerns by yourself and by the Planning Committee as well about this particular issue that we're supposed to address today. And the thing is, at the end of it, what I grasped was that we're really not in a position to make any decision, because there are so many other things that need to be fixed prior to any movement. That's what I observed in this particular, looking at the Planning Committee on that particular day. So I guess my question is, right now, you did your due diligence. I get that. You did what was asked of the citizens. You brought it to the PCC. But it's no different today than it was last time that we submitted it to you. Am I correct? Other than they defeated it.
Yeah, you remanded it back to the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. I think what people are talking about, and we made this recommendation, that's all we can do, is make a recommendation, but everyone talks about the shortcomings of the Unified Development Code in the parish of Caddo. Everybody talks about the master plan and the shortcomings of the master plan. We suggested that, like the city is doing, the city of Shreveport is updating its master plan to make it more relevant, to make it more up-to-date. We suggested to the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission, and they came to you to update the Unified Development Code in the parish and to do a master plan that was representative of the rural areas outside the city limits of Shreveport. And we were prepared to assist in helping set up the RFPs, whatever's necessary, to get a consulting firm, but we've heard nothing else from you, the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. So there are problems, but they will continue to be problems until an investment is made to make the code and the master plan more relevant to the areas outside the city limits.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what we're dealing with today, we're probably dealing with it next week, or the next week, or the next week, or the next week, until we finally put something in writing to actually adhere and address not just this particular concern, this particular ordinance, but other ordinances that will be coming very shortly as well. Am I correct?
And we're not preparing an ordinance, but the Unified Development Code for Caddo Parish was never applicable to rural living outside the city limits of Shreveport. We made the suggestion that the parish, since it pulled itself away from the Metropolitan Planning Commission, that the parish would do its own ordinance, modify the Unified Development Code to make it more relevant and more applicable to the rural areas in the parish. That has not happened. So we are still under the authority with the Unified Development Code to administer that ordinance. And whether we agree, disagree, or have no opinion, that is the law until you all change it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Clark. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, this ordinance about the manufactured housing, would that apply anywhere outside the five-mile radius, or would it just be inside the traditional planning zone?
It's for the planning limits, the five, up to five miles beyond the city limits of Shreveport.
Great. And then I'm just looking through the documents, the vote at the PCC on this ordinance regarding whether to recommend it or to deny it. It looks like it was two yes, two no, and one abstain. Is that right?
That was the first vote. The second vote, it was recommended for approval, but the vote was two for and three against, so the motion failed.
Okay, so it was not approved? It was not recommended by the PCC?
It was not, it was recommended by the staff, and the motion was made by a member of the PCC, but the motion did not care.
Okay, so, and then it says, "Based on staff analysis and review of the above standards and facts of record, MPC staff concludes that the recommendation to approve the COTEX amendment is warranted." So that's, your staff recommends this?
And the only reason for that, if you want me to elaborate, Commissioner, was that the, in a couple of years back, you all had entertained another ordinance to make, create a whole nother zoning district for manufactured homes in the parish. So, and based on the fact of what the citizens, evidently they've changed their minds, but what the citizens on Rice Road were continuously saying to us, they'd even come to the city council meeting and expressed their concerns to the city council, which had no jurisdiction whatsoever. But evidently, there is no need for this ordinance now, since nobody is actually promoting it.
Well, I mean, on that point, I would agree with you, Director Clark. And I'll also point out, for the benefit of all of our listeners, and maybe I'll ask you about it as well, according to the ordinance and resolution fact sheet that we have, the effects of the proposed actions are, these changes are consistent with the following provisions of the Shreveport-Caddo 2030 Grade Expectations Master Plan, and there's two listed. The second one is revising regulations for best practices in enforcement. Fine. But then the first one says, "Ensuring equitable health and safety outcomes for all." And so my question, sort of broadly, and you can answer if you'd like, is if I, if, if I own a piece of land in rural agricultural zone, but it's in the five miles, and my neighbor owns a piece of land, and my neighbor has $250,000 to build a slab house and live in it, but I only have $80,000, and I want to have a manufactured home, and I then pay $350 to get permission to build that home, and also presumably sometimes my permission will be denied, because we wouldn't create an opportunity to deny permission if we were never going to deny it. Is that really equitable? Or is it pro-rich guy and anti-poor guy?
And I guess you could look at it either way, Commissioner. In order for it to be equitable, the persons that live in the $400,000 home, I think you alluded to, has certain property rights also, and they have no voice whatsoever in what goes next to them. And that's why citizens say that, that's why they moved to the, outside the city limits to the parish, so that their property rights are protected. There are persons that don't want a manufactured home next door to them. And, you know, I think whatever decision that, you know, this commission makes is what's equitable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Director Clark. I'll speak more about this when it comes up on the agenda for vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins?
Madam President? Madam President, I'll defer to your judgment on this, but it sounds like we have some work to do with respect to this body working with the Caddo Parish Planning Committee. And would it be appropriate to propose that this issue be added to the Long Range Planning Committee's agenda?
When we get to that item, since we actually, I just yielded my time during this report to address some of the concerns, because I wasn't sure if the constituents who were here would be leaving before we got to the item, but I wanted to make sure that we addressed those concerns. And so I wanted to get some clarification, and then it just kind of branched off into different conversations. So I was just about to make a recommendation to say, since it's during this time, I do know that we have a couple of Commissioners who need to get out to go to their respective neighborhood meeting. So I want to wrap this up, if we could, and when it comes to that item, we can go ahead and address it then.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas?
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to clarify, Mr. Clark, for the record, there were some citizens from Rice Road here. I know we only heard from one that spoke against it, but there were some that were for it. I just wanted to make sure that they were recognized for attending. I just want you to, and I don't know why they didn't speak, but I would have rathered they spoke as well, but... they spoke as well, but I did want to recognize that they were here. I did want to clarify one question. Does this ordinance ban mobile homes in Caddo Parish?
Not at all.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And, you know, Commissioner Thomas, I'm very saddened also that those citizens that came to us and leaned so heartily on us, sort of left us out on a limb that was being sought, sought down, and did not speak to what they actually asked us to do. It makes us look like we're the bad guys, and we're doing things to negatively impact citizens, and that's something that's far, far from the truth.
Thank you so much. I will say that, like it's been stated before, I think there is some work that we can do. I know that the, what year was this UDC?
2017.
2017. 2027 is fastly approaching, I think we're approaching 10 years. I know Ms. Newbert has come before us before and offered some suggestions, and I think that it can be time for us to review what has worked and what has not worked. I think in the future that it'd be beneficial for us to try to explore, looking at that. I know you mentioned about the 2030 master plan or redoing it. We did take that into consideration, and I think it's, us as a body, I think we, we had other options that we'd like to see done in our process that are separate from the city. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, but they did come, Mr. Clark, they just didn't speak, so.
And I'd like to share with the Commissioner, Thomas, that the UDC was basically a copy in the parish of the UDC in the city. And that's why it had downtown zoning districts and other things as districts, and it wasn't really rural in nature. So it's totally ineffective when it comes to the parish. But as long as, you know, you all don't take any action, it will still be the law. And by your contract with us, we will still be mandated to enforce it.
Thank you.
And we continue to suggest to you and to the Caddo Parish Planning and Zoning Commission that you need an ordinance that is representative of rural Caddo Parish, that has input and community and citizen engagement from the persons that are here today to tell that consulting firm their ideas of what rural Caddo Parish should look like. But as long as nothing happens, you know, we're going to continue to have these kind of moments, and I don't think they're fair to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Clark. Okay, that will conclude my president's report. I want y'all to have that same energy when y'all talk for 15 minutes.
Okay, we have no old business today, so we'll move forward to new business. And the first item we have is to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance number 6558 of 2025. That's in relation to PZC case number 25-2-C-TAP.
All right, I have a motion from Vice President Ken Everson, and a second from Chris Crackman. Vice President Everson?
I'd like to make a motion that-
He doesn't have a board. He doesn't have a board.
I don't have a board either.
No, you don't have a board. I was just making sure, I heard some no's down there, so I'm letting him know. Vice President Everson doesn't have a board, so I knew that he was the motion, and I put you on for the second. But if you don't want the second, I can make the second.
We'll see.
Okay. I'll make the second for discussion. Vice President Everson?
I'd like to move that ordinance number 6558 of 2025 be remanded to the Long Range Planning Committee. I can get a second.
I second, the chair did second. Would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, my reason being based upon what I've heard here, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of information that's not factual. I think we still have some work to be done, and I think it'd be good that we can go into a venue where we can get factual information, we can go back on a historical perspective, and we can hear from all parties. So I would ask that you would support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. Commissioner Chris Crackman, and I see Attorney Frazier is on the board as well.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to table this indefinitely, if I can get a second.
Okay.
Thank you. I think this, this has been through the PZC a few times in different forms. It has been through long-range planning twice, I think, or once, I don't remember. It's, it's pretty clear that it's, it's super flawed. We have, we had 14 people show up today in opposition to it. We had 11 emails in opposition to it. I'm not sure how many people were for it, but we had plenty of people speak out on it. Our director made it clear that it was written, you know, with the guidelines of the master plan we currently have, the same one that the city of Shreveport's already redoing. The UDC and the master plan are outdated, they need to be redone, and this was done in likeness of what the master plan calls for. So I, I think it's safe to say that this, this whole deal is, is pretty well, kind of cut and dry, that it really needs to go. And also, I noted in the PZC meeting that the residents of Rice Road were recommended to all get together and rezone Rice Road. So they still have the opportunity to, to rezone their area to residential, to be able to pick and choose who their neighbors are without affecting the rest of the five-mile boundary citizens, which I can definitely appreciate, because, you know, my district's a good ways away from, from Rice Road. So I can appreciate them wanting what is or isn't in their neighborhood and not affecting the rural constituents that are in, you know, District Two, District One, around Blanchard and so forth, so. And if I could, since they all came from Baton Rouge, I would like to ask Stephen Duke, the Executive Director and General Counsel of Louisiana Manufactured Home Association, to come up and, and if he had anything he needed to finish or say, I'd like to give him the rest of my time. And if anybody has any questions for him in regards to this.
We currently have a motion on the floor that we do need to consider, and I do have Attorney Frazier up to speak as well.
Commissioner, I just wanted to point out that, two things, that if the commission does not act on the ordinance within 90 days, it is deemed denied. If you all choose to advance it, and it would take a two-thirds vote of the commission to pass it because it was not recommended by the PZC, as opposed to just the seven to pass the ordinance. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you.
So, do I still have the remainder of my seven minutes?
Yes.
Steve? You have more that you'd like to add? I know you drove a long way. And I appreciate it.
No, well, I appreciate it. Again, Madam Chair and members, thank you for letting me speak real quick. One thing I would point out is, affordable housing is such an important part of what we need for everybody, regardless of what community you're across the state, this is an issue that keeps running into problems everywhere. And like, factory-built housing, whether it's manufactured or modular, it's not everybody's answer, but it certainly is an answer that shouldn't be excluded. And one of the things that bothers me about it, it's like one of the peoples here, and I know we had a bunch that showed up today that did submit the cards just because they came and, you know, to oppose it. It's troubling for me, is whenever you start making people sign a piece of paper to, you know, accept or oppose a neighbor coming into their community. And my question is, what if you come into a situation where, you know, somebody doesn't look like you or me, you know, they, they might, you know, not be the right political persuasion, or they might not be the right religion, or the right color, or whatever? You know, I've seen situations like this that have come up, and that's troubling. And one other thing that I would tell you that I think would be a problem, when you start putting things like that and having a hearing for each one of these individuals that wants to come in and actually try and get into your community, if they've got a mortgage that they've applied for, what's going to happen to them if you, you've got a backlog? Because I know you guys, how hard y'all work. What's going to happen to you if they got a backlog, and these people get put off a couple of meetings, because it happens? You know? If they get put off a couple of meetings, then they lose their mortgage. You know, the commitment from the mortgage company, what are they going to do at that point? I think that we're tying people's hands, and what I'm here to tell you something, you don't know me, Representative Burrell gave me probably one of the worst weapons I ever got in my life down at the, at the state legislature, and he's sitting here smiling, he's still, no, I mean, he's great, we're still friends, but he, 37 years of lobbying to be in our state government, that was the worst weapon I ever took. I still, he saw me at the Capitol this year, started smiling when he saw me, he's still laughing about it. I mean, it still hurts, and I'm not in therapy anymore, but, you know, that, beyond that, but, but seriously, he knows who I am, he knows my words good. I'll promise you this much, I'll bring a team of people up here that could show you how to address some of these issues, because some of the things, the points that the people made for and against, I certainly don't want to put a rusted-out, beat-out trailer next to somebody's half a million-dollar house. I've been with that industry for 37 years, we've never advocated for that. But I can promise you, if you want affordable, attainable housing, we can come in and do something that you can stand next to, I promise you, every one of you would want to stand next to it when we're done and cut a ribbon. So just completely excluding HUD code product is not the way to answer this. And I'm willing and I'm committing to you that we'll bring the people that we need up here to help educate everybody, even the people on Rice Road or wherever, and do what we can to try and do that. So I see my time's running out, but it's been a pleasure. Thank you for allowing me to speak again and have a few minutes, and it's good to see you, my friend.
Thank you. I would like to call for the question at this time, and on all discussion on this matter, I think, okay, it's been moved by the chair, second by Vice President, seeing no other discussion, please vote. Call it for the question.
My board is still down.
Vice President Everson is in the affirmative.
Okay, and that motion carries with 10 in support, one in opposition, and one absent. And so we will have the question now, and that is the motion to table the 6558 indefinitely from Commissioner Crackman.
Board down, I vote no.
And Commissioner Everson's vote is negative? Okay, that motion carries. I believe that final vote count is six in favor, five in opposition. And so that item is tabled, and that brings us to 11.2 to advance the introduction of ordinance 6559 of 2025. That's an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or designee to sell the parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with-
All right, it's been motioned by the chair, second by Commissioner John Paul Young. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support and one absent. That brings us now to consider advancing the introduction of ordinance 6560 of 2025. That is an ordinance to amend chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo relating to traffic schedules, to establish a schedule for, and let me get the language correct, I'm sorry, one moment.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner John Paul Young, and second by Commissioner Ron Catherine. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I'll try to be brief. There's a bad speeding problem in Dixie Garden, which I've presented to you all before a number of times. We thought that the cameras might be the solution to it, but they were not permitted under state law during the last session. I think the best way to manage traffic speeding is with sheriff deputies with radar guns, but they do not have the manpower to do it. And the people in Dixie Garden, and I believe probably also in other parts of Caddo Parish, need some traffic calming, and that's what this ordinance would allow us to begin to do. So I appreciate it if you would support it.
Thank you. Attorney Frazier?
I just wanted to point out-
Yes, which is, I think, a different number than this one.
I think it's, no, it's to amend the title of 6560.
Right, we did the agenda addition to keep the, the number the same, but changed the title.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
And Commissioner Everson is in the affirmative. Okay, and that motion carries with 10 in support, none in opposition, and two absent. And that brings us to considering to advancing the introduction of ordinance 6548 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the debt service fund and the capital outlay fund to provide an appropriation of $10 million for the construction of a pickleball park and to otherwise-
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Gregory Young, second by Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. I move that we return this to the Economic Development Committee for further discussion.
Okay. Second? Okay, I'm sorry, I have a motion on the floor right now. Is it in germane to that?
It is.
Okay, well, you can get on the board shortly. Commissioner Young?
Yes, amid so much of the controversy that's surrounding this project, I think it's important to note that this is not just simply about tourism, even though I'm a strong advocate for tourism, and I do agree that pickleball is something that, that will really contribute to the health of our community, the economic health, the social health, the quality of life for our community. However, in order for this to be the renowned success that I believe it could be, we're going to have to do a better job as an organization to remove the cloud of skepticism, so much misinformation is surrounding. I'm amazed that we still continue to have people that come within these chambers and excite us for spending the taxpayers' money irresponsibly. And that's just, that's, to me, that's a very strong indication that people really don't know what's going on. That people actually believe that we're taking taxpayers' money and building a $10 million pickleball court, and that's just not accurate. That is simply not accurate. If, if we were talking about taking the taxpayers' money and making the taxpayers pay for it, I would be an opponent of this project. To the contrary, quite to the contrary, the individuals that are going to be responsible for paying for this project would be the people who actually use the pickleball court. The pickleball court is a project that is designed to pay for itself through revenue bonds. They're going to be individuals who choose to play pickleball, they're going to have to pay a fee to play pickleball. The only way that the taxpayers are going to be required to pay for the pickleball is not through their taxes, but rather through voluntary fees that they will pay in order to play pickleball. And I just think facts like this is getting lost. And every time I hear someone come up here and talk about, you're taking the taxpayers' money, and you're doing this, why ain't you doing that? That's just, that's a strong indication to me that we, we still have work to do in terms of trying to educate and communicate the facts to the public. And for that reason, I think that we should devote just a little bit more time. Let me just state a couple of more facts as to why I think that we need to postpone this. Is that, number one, nothing that we do here in 2025 is going to alter when this project commence. Nothing that we do, whether we vote for it today or we vote for it next year, it's not going to change to date that we put a golden shovel in the ground and begin this project. And so we can take the time that we have to better educate the public, because the number two factor, I think, is very, very important, very important, to the success of this project. Is that the people are going to have to believe that this is something that's going to work for our community, and pessimism will kill this project. Skepticism will kill the success of this project. The whole idea behind the project is to create some excitement around what we're trying to do in Caddo. We need dynamics like this in order to attract our young people, to move to this area, and to retain the young people that we have. And I think it's very, very important that we kind of remove the cloud and generate- And I think it's very, very important that we kind of remove the cloud and generate more enthusiasm around this project. And for that reason, I wish that you all would vote with me to return it to economic development and we launch a crusade. We can coordinate this with the administration. I'm willing to go on, go on the road show to different communities within Caddo, to the different parks and recreation, where we're facilities that we can, um, we can acquire. I'm willing to to take that step to better educate people about what we need to do to make our area more dynamic because the reality is, is that we're losing over a thousand people a year that's leaving this community and we got to do dynamic things to create an environment where people believe that this is a place where they want to continue to raise their children. And and I yield back to the President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner John Paul Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say very briefly that I appreciate other Commissioner Young's deliberation and care and concern and interest in this project and I'd also like to volunteer to go on the road with him to sell it.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace Anger.
I've been on the road to sell this. I will continue to be on the road to sell it, but what I would like to ask of you, Madam President, is that we bring up a young lady who came to speak that her card was not seen and so she has not had an opportunity to speak. And so her and her mother came to speak and I would like us to allow them to speak. I don't think that that is going to change anyone's opinion on what they're going to vote for, but I would like to bring that opportunity available to her so that we can do exactly what Commissioner Greg Young has asked is to show people why there is a need. So I'm asking you, yes, okay, great. So Trinity, Shelley. I appreciate y'all for coming in. I do not know y'all, but I know that y'all are very strong advocates for pickleball and I appreciate y'all coming.
I'm Trinity Armstrong and my address is six oh two Somerville Drive. Me and my sister, when we aren't traveling with our sports team, we love to just try different hobbies and we love to play pickleball. Besides Acro and RU and some other places, there aren't many opportunities to do anything in Shreveport. My sister's in high school and I'm in middle school, so obviously most of the time we're around friends and we really struggle to find some things to do other than outside of party scenes. We love to play pickleball together, but it's really hard to find a place to play. We are members of the YMCA, but their playing time is limited and the courts are always full. We've been kicked out of East Ridge multiple times because we aren't members, but we really just want to play a game. We set up a pickleball net in front of our house, but we are always watching for cars and have to move the net. It's not very ideal. When we go to Houston to stay with my grandma, she always asks us if we want to go to an Astros game, main event, Chuck E. Cheese, any of these cool places, but we tell her we want to go to the pickleball park. Please consider the youth in our city and an opportunity to play pickleball in a fun and safe environment. It's a wonderful social activity that could keep us on the courts and off the streets. Thank you.
Am I supposed to speak? Okay, I'll be real quick. I have come to speak on behalf of this project before. I've heard a lot of the the same rhetoric, but I mean, we really need to promote quality of life in this city. We, the more people that we have leave the city, the less taxes we have to fund the major concerns that the constituent has with roads and water. These are definitely community outcries. I do agree, there needs to be more education about the money that's being spent, but the longer down the road we push this off, the more people we continue to lose. This property property will be managed by experienced operator, the YMCA. It can pay for itself many times over. The location in South Shreveport is ideal. And I do agree, many people that I have talked to have major tunnel vision. They can't think outside the box about this project. It would be an amazing opportunity for us to be able to host tournaments, bring in people from all over the country, even outside of the country. People think that this city does not have the infrastructure, that we don't have the things to do, that we don't have the hotels to bring people in. But I spend half of my year in small town Ruston, Louisiana, because they are the sport capital of the South. I pay four hundred dollars a night to stay in crappy hotels, okay? They have, I think, about six hundred hotels in the city of Ruston, but we are pouring into that city to play volleyball and basketball and softball and baseball. We have here, I believe, ten thousand hotel rooms. I mean, maybe they're not the best, but people that want to play their sport don't really care, right? They want to come to town, play their sport, spend the money. So I do believe this is a project that we have the opportunity to jump on, bring in revenue to our city and keep our citizens here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would, please come back and state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Shelley Armstrong, six oh two Somerville Drive, Shreveport seven one 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 five. Thank you.
Commissioner Blake, you have fifty eight seconds left. You're done? All right, thank you. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, I support this project, but also support Commissioner Greg Young's proposal that we refer this back to economic development because I agree with Commissioner Young that it's important we continue to build support and understanding. I'm afraid if we were to take it to a vote in in the near future that we might not have all the support we need. So I think we owe it to the citizens to take it back to economic development, continue to answer those questions, address those concerns. So I'm supportive of that, that motion. I would also like to clarify one point and that is, you know, this is, these are to be paid for by revenue bonds, which means that the users of the facility that those user fees should pay for the the cost of financing and maintaining the project. However, just just in full disclosure, I want everybody to understand out there that may be listening that that if it were to, if the user fees were not to cover all the expenses, then, you know, the parish has an obligation, other sources of revenue from the parish would have an obligation to cover that gap. And so Ms. Bryan, I just have a quick question for you. What what source of revenue would most likely cover any gap if one were to actually exist?
We would look to see if the parks revenue has enough availability as well as our other non-dedicated funds.
So things like oil and gas, is that?
Yes, like oil and gas, just pretty much.
There are others, there are other forms of revenue that aren't, aren't tax based revenue that the parish could draw upon.
Correct, and I want everyone to keep in mind that this is a proposal. You haven't approved it, so the actual financing has not been approved, really. So it's a conversation about what we would like to do. If you approve the project, then we have to go through the process of working with the commission to get the actual financing in place.
And work through the the actual details of the project.
Yes, work through the details, work through the fine tunes. So it, I just want people, those to understand so that it's not, oh, you said this or you said that. We're, you're considering a proposal. If you decide to give us the okay to proceed with the project, then we have to come back with those fine details of what what's all involved.
And then we have another vote on the on the details.
Yes, you would have to have votes in relation to the bonds. We can't just issue bonds.
I just wanted to get some of those points out there. Thank you, Madam President.
Great points. Thank you. Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say too that just on behalf of our chairman, John Paul Young, if you want to take it back, I mean, I'll support that. But I do want to say too that in my experience of my twenty five years of dealing with projects where we're paying for for revenue bonds or government bonds, you're hardly going to ever get a higher than fifty percent of the people to even publicly to support it. Now, if it gets built, they'll use it. But to get their support beforehand, you're just kind of shooting in the dark. That's the reason sometimes you have to take the leadership role based upon the information that is presented, the economic information that's presented and move forward, you know, with the project. Because if not, someone else, next thing you know, someone else would have the same thing. What comes to mind is Convention Center, the Independent Stadium, they beat us down so bad for both of those projects. But if you ask us to go and tear it down or move it somewhere else, you wouldn't do it. Or even the boats. We got beat up like the Dickens on the boats, although, you know, we didn't have to pay. It didn't go out for government finance. But at the same time, that's the public you're dealing with. And, you know, you can educate them to whatever extent, but you're going to always have misinformation. So sometimes you just have to make a decision, but given this case here, if we want to send it back and if you want to do a road show, that's fine, but but I'm just saying, you're just not going to get the kind of support that you think upfront. Sometimes you have to make a decision and go forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I support Commissioner Young motion as well because the thing is, the constituents in my district, for instance, I have two meetings scheduled. One at A.B. Palmer next week and one in Southern Hills and my phone has been blowing up, receiving texts, calls and in person just thanking me for bringing Mr. Wesley Parks and Recreation to be able to talk about this pickleball because again, there's plenty of people, just because we sit around this harshest and we have a lot of information, okay? But there are people in the districts, regardless of the district, that don't have a clue about pickleball. They have the little information that they hear from us, but the most important thing is that going forward, I want the constituents to actually hear and know what it is because that'd be very forthright before we start talking about it here around the Horseshoe. I had no idea what a pickleball was. So the thing is going forward, like Commissioner Young said, more information we could get and I also understand what Commissioner Burrell is saying as well, we're never going to get a hundred percent and that's not what we're looking for. But the thing is, if we could get a greater number of percentage of people that actually know what we are voting on, it makes a big difference. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. See no other discussion, please vote.
Can you remind the vote? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blake asks if I would remind us what we're voting on and the motion was made by Commissioner Gregory Young, second by Commissioner John Paul Young to remand this back to the Economic Development Committee for further discussion.
And Commissioner Epperson is in the affirmative. And that motion carries with that's ten in support, none in opposition and two absent. Brings us now to consideration of eleven point five, which is to advance a special resolution declaring an annual remembrance of the Shreveport Six.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ron Catherine, second by the Chair. Commissioner Catherine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to englobo and advance eleven five. And I would like Commissioner Blake to speak upon that one, but eleven six, eleven seven, eleven eight, eleven nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
And that's been second by the Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Blake, would you like to speak on special resolution of remembrance of the Shreveport Six?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner Catherine. I wanted to take this opportunity to make this an annual remembrance of the special Shreveport Six, the men and women that lost their lives drowning. Not to make it a situation where we bring people in. I think it's such a hard thing for the mothers having to remember in such public places, but I want the remembrance of the Shreveport Six to be something that is brought up as a reason we need to be funding programs to help everyone in our community when it comes to swim. That these precious lives were not lost in vain, but over twenty thousand people have learned to swim because of funding to help make sure people have an opportunity to learn to swim. And not just children, but adults. And that was a need that was missed, that was found through the children learning to swim. That the question came in that if the children were swimming, but the parents were there, what would happen? And so this is something that I think that we need to use as a reminder of what we're doing and why we're doing it and the important programs that we should be funding when it comes to lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other discussion, please vote on the englobo items to advance.
That motion carries with ten in support, none in opposition and two absent and brings us to Communicating Committee Report, second round.
All right, I see no one on the board.
Citizens. That was, yes.
Sure.
I got it, John. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I was ready to go, but I think that it's important for us to be consistent. I thought that was the reason why we were asking for it to be moved to long range planning, but it seems that the body had a different motive that they wanted to carry out today. But I do believe that there was a lot of discussion still to be had about that item in particular. And I think we jumped the gun on that one.
But to me, it's the two different.
Yeah, that's.
And that's why we should be still discussing it in committee because I think we could discuss it all, but. If it's going to be an item on the, you know, on the agenda in the future to discuss other parts of it, I'm not against it. I'm not opposed to it. Thank you.
Just point of information, even if it's tabled, we can bring it back up later.
With two thirds vote.
And to be clear, two thirds vote would also have been the amount that you would have needed to, you know, adopt it anyway, so really any action, additional action on this item would have taken two thirds vote anyway.
Sure. Was never intending to revisit that specific issue. It's just kind of the broader discussion. It's fine, I'm not, I'll let it drop.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice President Epperson.
Just want to remind everyone that this parish and planning zoning board didn't come up at the initiation of the commission. This was a state law that was put in place. This was dropped in our lap. Let's remember that. So we, you know, we had to do the best that we had to do what we had to do. And and I've also, I thought when you table something, there should be a specific time. You should say table indefinite. Table for a specific period of time.
I thought that's what I heard.
What? What did you hear?
I thought that that's what I heard, indefinite, that it was tabled indefinite.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. And I just want to let everybody know that I think all of our committees, if they aren't live streamed, they are recorded. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk? Any citizen can pull those committee meetings up at your leisure. I think all of our meetings are live streamed and on YouTube and I guess Facebook and all that, and they are archived and you can pull those up at any time. And you can stop it, you can pause it, you can bag it up, go forward and make sure that you get the information that's out there. The website, how is my, my, my profile listed on the website? Because I don't mind my, 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 my number. I'm elected official. My number is out there.
We have a public number profile and whatever that is would be matched by what's on the website. You you each filled out a thing that asked. Your number probably is.
Okay, we just want citizens to know that they can go to Caddo.gov, pull up parish commissioners and I think I didn't mind my, my number being on there. It's not on there, but, but anyway.
They, they used to be on there.
We'll, we'll request a review of those and we can reach out to everybody and double check. I'm not sure if maybe in the transition to the new website, if some things got removed.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. I was going to try not to touch on that because I, I have a joke and it's like a longstanding one. I say my number actually has to be on the bathroom wall because everybody has my number. So that's the first time that I've heard that I would. That's the first time that I've heard that I was eligible, but, so I thank you for bringing that up. Anybody who wants to contact me, they find me. It's out there, all right.
Madam President, just while we're on the subject there, we do actually have a meeting scheduled to go over some of the things on the website. So, if there are anything else that anybody notices might be, you know, missing or not working right, please let us know. We have a meeting scheduled next week to go over the website with those people. And in reference to something Commissioner Epperson said for the citizens, the best resource to research in watchback meetings is going to be through our YouTube channel. It is the best way to sort of tag where you want to look at, and if somebody wants to contact us, we can even tell them where in the meeting something was discussed. You can even get a transcript through YouTube as well by turning on the closed captioning.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris, correct me.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, what we tabled today was an ordinance to put more restrictions against the manufactured homes. It had nothing to do with the UDC as a whole, the master plan as a whole. That is still something that we could all resolve to the Parish zoning commission to have corrected, fixed, or contracted, but they have actually, I think, sent us a resolution, might have to go back and look, Mr. Clerk, but I'm pretty sure they sent us a resolution asking us to fund a new UDC or new master plan or both, I'm not sure, but that can absolutely be brought up to one of our committees. What was tabled indefinitely today has nothing to do with the UDC or the 2030 Great Expectations Master Plan. It's just manufactured homes and the provisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grace Anne Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. While everybody goes on the Caddo Parish Roadshow to educate everyone about pickleball project, I think this is a great time to also hand out the cards, and I'm going to ask you to join me, Chris, on the road show, to share with everybody our Caddo Ready information. The commercials are being seen on TV, and every guest that comes into Avalon, we show them the Caddo Ready, and so I think it's a great time to educate the citizens of Caddo Parish about the different things that they can register for alerts. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Ron Carthren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, let me apologize for, you know, jumping out there when John said we did, but the other thing is too, and this really has nothing to do with this, but I'm going to say it anyway, I just got a call this week concerning the $54,000 that we make. And.
Who?
I know. And we.
Oh.
Yes. And the thing is, again, I don't know how it got out there on the website, but it's been asked to be cleaned up at least once, but it's like, somebody called me just this week to ask me, I didn't know y'all made that much money, it's like, how much money? And they told me it's like 54, 64, something like that, $1,000 per year. Not from here.
I actually did some research, we had a constituent, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I did find out where this number came from. This is a number that came from a labor statistics page about commissioners across Louisiana. Understand, obviously, our parish is the only one that calls our administrative body the Caddo Parish Commission, and so, they're lumping all types of people with the word "commission" together into one category, and that runs a very broad spectrum of jobs. So, that is why that number is absolutely not in relation to y'all in any way, shape, or form. It is just a similarity of names.
So, Madam Chair, my recommendation is we get that cleaned up one way or another, or we start getting paid properly. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Greg Young.
I know that I was later have another meeting to attend, so I'll be very quick. I understand the question that my very esteemed colleague, John, asks about, in event that if the revenue bonds doesn't generate the revenue, the implications for that. I just want to go on record and make sure that it's clear that I see that question and that answer as being the product of a hypothetical. There is no way in the world that I would support this project if I believed at all that it wouldn't pay for itself. And I just want to be clear, because I really do believe in being consistent. My way of thinking about public projects really involves a different criteria, and that criteria more often is that can it pay for itself? Is it necessary? If we're going to go into our mineral funds or go into any other funds to support something, then it needs to pass the necessary test. Okay? This is not necessary, but I believe it will pay for itself. So, I just want to be clear, because I don't want someone coming back later on and saying, well, you know, that didn't pay for itself, and you supported it. Well, I will support some things that don't pay for itself, but it's got to be necessary. Okay? I just want to be clear about that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Second time around, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to confirm that my statement was intended to be hypothetical.
Yes, sir.
I do think that it will pay for itself, but, you know, we've all, sometimes business will throw you a curveball, and I want everybody to understand what the repercussions would be, or what the fallback would be if things didn't play out the way we think they will.
Yes, sir. If I can just borrow just about 10 seconds of your time.
Sure.
I think it's important to ask that question that you asked. I didn't mean to.
No, I'm just.
Because that question is going to be asked over and over again as we go on our road to it, so I think it's a very legitimate question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for your indulgence, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Thank you, Commissioner Young. All right, before we adjourn, I just want to, I like to be consistent. Thank you, Commissioner Blake, for making mention of what today symbolizes for women. I also wanted to be on record that it was 45 years later before Black women and other people of color had the opportunity to vote. It was not until the Voting Rights Act of 1965 that all women had the right to vote. Thank you. Now, I'll attain that motion. Thank you. Me adjourned.